Thank you all for coming out tonight to our special city council town hall workshop. We are waiting on one more council member. Councilmember Cobb and councilmember Alvarez will not be here tonight due to family. If you would like to reach out to them, please go to www.killeentexas.gov and go under City Council and their contact information, email and phone numbers there. So as soon as we get another council member, we will start our town hall workshop. I apologize. It is 5:03 and I will call this meeting to order. For the record, councilmember Cobb and councilmember Alvarez is not present due to family. And Mayor Protem is in route, I think. With that being said, I will turn over our special city council town hall workshop to Mr. Kent Cagle, who will be the moderator for tonight. Thank you.
Well, welcome to everybody that showed up. Thank you. This is the annual special workshop. The council set this up about three years ago to have this workshop around the beginning of the fiscal year. And I think one thing everybody's curious about is why it's not just an open forum? And it's a double edged sword. If you have an open forum, when the council meets in a quorum, they can't discuss city business unless it's on an agenda. So people could come up and say things, but there couldn't be a back and forth discussion. You can give simple answers of what the city law or city policy is, but that's all you can do. You can't discuss the issues. So what we did, we put together a number of issues that we're working on, that are high dollar, that are in the, we think are in the public interest right now. And so those are things. We'll have a presentation. The mayor will start off, and then councilmember Solomon, then we'll have a number of staff reports. And then after that, we can discuss any of the items that are on the agenda. And if you have things that you want to talk about or questions that you want to get answered that are not on the agenda, we have some cards over here. If you want to put any type of contact information you want on there and what your question or what your issue is, and we'll get back to you. Somebody from staff will get back to you. Or if you want to address it specifically to a council member, they could get back to you individually after this town hall. So with that said, Mayor, I think we're going to bring up the PowerPoint. And Mayor Nash King will start off with the 2040 Plan update.
Thank you. All right. Well, they're working it out. Thank you all for coming. Can you hear me in the back, sir? Can you hear me? Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you all for coming. This is just an update on what the city of Killeen have done, and that includes council giving directions. But the work is done by our staff, by Mr. Cagle and our assistant city manager, Mrs. Wilson. They do the daily operation of the city, but our executive directors and employees, they make it happen. So it's truly amazing what we have accomplished.
This year, as we get ready to close out, and I thank the council for giving us the opportunity to come and have this town hall with our resident. It is very significant and it's important that we get the opportunity to see different faces. And I thank you all for taking out of your busy schedule to come here this afternoon. With that being said, this is my agenda for tonight, for this afternoon. It's so weird because we always, it's not, yes, it's after five, so this evening, I should say. So it's so weird because we always meet at 3:00 in the afternoon. So what's important to me, and also the council, and also to our staff, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the individuals that are looking or do not know about the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We took the time to reach out to our residents, bringing in a consultant, to ask a lot of people how do they want to see our city grow. And that is very significant because some individuals cannot make the council meeting. So we wanted to ensure that when we grow our city, we have input from the majority of the people here. So the 2040 Comprehensive Plan is moved by six big ideas. And I will be looking at my notes because these are things that I think is important. This is my part of our town hall, that each individual council member will tell you their direction or will answer questions for you. But this is important and dear to my heart as the mayor of our great city. The first big idea that I took from that is our physical responsible. How will we use our revenue is very important to me because our budget is limited. And each council member is a district representative, and we also have three at large. But for our district representatives, they have residents in their district that want certain things. With one budget, you have to ensure that we work together to meet the needs of our residents, but we have to prioritize what is important. So being physical responsible with our budget is important to me. The positive community culture and environment, we want to ensure that our environment is not only positive, but it's safe, that we're able to interact with each other because the city is so diverse. And our diversity in the city of Killeen is really our strength. So we get along with our neighboring cities and also especially with Fort Cabasos. So that's very important, how we interact. In the city of Killeen, the image of our city is truly important to me. And that is another thing, idea, that our residents, this is their input, what they think is important also. My biggest one is our downtown revitalization. I know I talk about that a lot, but I do truly believe that every city needs a downtown. That is the cornerstone of a city, that you have a downtown, a place that we can all come together, unite together, celebrate at different events, and really build relationships. So our downtown revitalization, I get in more detail with that, is very significant and dear to my heart. A safe and affordable and efficient transportation. With the Opera Fund and our team, and I call Team Killeen, we all came together. The council came up with the priorities. And as you prioritize what is important when it comes to our roadway, sometimes it has to be updated because major things may happen. Or, you know, you may want to do a development. So trying to prioritize what roadway, especially our streets, what is so important at that particular time. Because the city of Killeen, as you know, we are growing and there's a lot of development throughout our city. So we just hope that you be patient with us as we work through this process. As I stated earlier, we have limited resources when it comes to our budget because we already planned our budget. And with our CIP, you can maneuver it a little bit, but we want to make sure we stay on track when we utilize in our 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Vibrant neighborhoods and local businesses is important. We want economic development to come to our city. And that's why KEDC plays a very vital part with the city of Killeen. That partnership is needed to bring in those businesses. But these six big ideas is what really moves the council forward with our budget. We make our decisions based on the Comprehensive Plan for 2040, how we want to grow our city and the revenue that is needed to do it. I'm really not for taxes, but sometimes, you know, things happen if you want certain things in your city, especially services. Services, quality of life, is very important to me in this council. This slide, I want you to see what has happened during the last two years with our Comprehensive Plan. And I cannot see the slides, so that's why I have my notes. I can take my glasses off if I can. The 45% that's not started, this is in our Comprehensive Plan from '23 to '24. This is what we have accomplished so far. What's in progress, 34% of that Comprehensive Plan, 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And we have completed 21% of that plan. And this is within two years. So our city staff has really been working extremely hard to stay within that 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And it takes a lot of man hours. If you drive through the city of Killeen, there is a lot of development. There's a lot of infrastructure going on. Watercrest is one of the roads that we're working on. And I like it because I hear people tell me all the time, "Oh, my goodness, I thought it would never happen." Well, the way it happens is that you have to have revenue to do it. And even with Bunny Trail, that's been a long time. But it stayed a focus for this council. They kept the vision. And I want you to understand that comes to our streets. Once you start a project five years ago, and the individuals living in that neighborhood come to you, and then, not this particular one, this has been going on for a while, and then you have the revenue, well, what happens then? Another roadway has some problems, or we done developed in the area. Well, our first priority should be the five-year project that we already put in our CIP. So just please be patient with us as we move our city forward. The downtown investment that we have put in is over $15 million, not us, this is private investment, over $15 million. The businesses in our downtown Killeen area, the business owners have invested over $15 million. So why would I not be proud of our downtown Killeen revitalization program? Not only that, we have put our police officers down there. We have a homeless outreach out there. There are so many resources that went into our downtown Killeen area because the majority of the individuals that took out the time to fill out the survey, so we can come up with our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, wanted to see our downtown Killeen come back to life. And I think that is extraordinary. We have 62 new businesses. We started out with nothing. And this is the manpower and time our development service put in with Ms. Kate. You see her moving all the time. If you go downtown to a event, ask any business owner, "Who is Ms. Kate?" They'll tell you. Ms. Kate, will you wave your hand so they'll know who you are? Thank you for what you have contributed to our downtown revitalization. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. Thank you. We also have 12 of the public art installations throughout the city. And this is great. Why is this important? Because our volunteers got involved, residents, people that live in our city want to invest their time in our downtown by using their gifts and talents. And what I like also about it is the Boss Program on Fort Cabasos. We have an excellent partnership with them, and the soldiers come out and they get involved with what's going on in our downtown Killeen. We have a lot of people that may say things, but once you get involved and you sweat and give time and commitment to the city, you will see and be so proud of the work that you have done. Because we're going to display it. So we're extremely excited about that. Our jobs added is 162 jobs. And some of those individuals, the majority are our residents in Killeen. Small businesses are the backbone of a community until you bring in bigger business. So you have to start somewhere. And I do believe in free enterprise. If you have a dream, we're here to support you with that dream. Just hopefully you decide to take one of our buildings downtown. That's extremely important. Our historical building renovations is 27. 11 more is under construction. If you just ride through, every time I go through, somebody's working on a building. And that is so inspiring to me. And our downtown events, if you have gone to one event, you will never forget. It is so much fun. And I have people, and I know if you've been to an event, just talk to the people there. They come from out of town to enjoy our events. So I'm looking forward to what is in store as we continue to build up our downtown Killeen. I am so excited about it. This is the first time in the history we have a downtown business directory. And this is 82 businesses. Ms. Kate is part of her project, and that will continue to grow as more businesses come in our downtown area and our historical downtown. These are some of the upcoming events. One day that is dear to my heart is Veterans Day. We're going to have a Veterans Day parade on Monday. So please come out and be a part of that. And I want to tell you, if you want to be a part of it, you can contact Mr. Loopy in his email, or go to www.sintexavac.org. One thing about the city of Killeen, we love to partner with other nonprofit organizations so they can highlight their talent. So they run our Veterans Day parade. We also have our Last Night, which is tomorrow night, for our Fall Night Market. So please come out, bring your family, a lot of music, a lot of entertainment. You hear so often that we don't have anything in Killeen. We have a lot going on in Killeen. And you can find all this information on that website that's on the screen. And for the ones that are at home, it's www.killeentexas.gov/downtownevents. And then on Saturday, if you have a pet, they are a part of our community. They can get vaccinated at the Special Event Center on this Saturday. So please come. It's free. Please bring out your little baby. I call my daughter dog, Gotti, my baby. But she has been vaccinated. But for the ones that have not, please take advantage of this free service provided by the city. Holiday Under the Stars is coming up. So we have our Christmas tree lighting on Friday, December the 6th. That'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is my, I love Christmas. So this Holiday Under the Stars, they never disappoint. You can also come to our Jingle Bell Dash for the ones that are healthy and love to run, or you want to walk like me. That's on Saturday, December the 7th, and that'll be at 8:00 at our Andy K. Wells Hike and Bike Trail. And then our Festival of Holidays, that's on December the 14th, along with our 61st Annual Christmas Parade. All of this information can be found on our www.killeentexas.gov/downtownevents. It has been an honor to stand before you and give you some updates of the great things that we are doing in the city of Killeen. And I thank the staff and residents that have volunteered their time and service to make our city a better place for all. Thank you.
And now councilmember Solomon's going to say a few words about Neighborhood Watch in his district and some of the Featherline Road and rezoning issues there.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Good evening, everyone. You know, it was an exciting time to be here in Killeen. We have so much going on. Do I need to stand?
Because you have slides.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's better. There's so much happening in Killeen, and I want to talk about in my district, District Two, and two things I want to mention about the Neighborhood Watch, number one. And I think it's so important for us to have that, to the point that I decided to, let me just see how it works in my neighborhood. So we were, we got together in our neighborhood and we formed a Neighborhood Watch. And it's, we got with KPD, Killeen Police Department. We had our meetings over there, and we formed our groups, we formed our captains. And so we're moving forward with that. But Neighborhood Watch is so important in every neighborhood. And so to the point that I would, my vision is to continue not only in my neighborhood, but also in the neighborhoods of District Two. Those that do not have a Neighborhood Watch, I want to campaign encouraging them to start a Neighborhood Watch because one of the things that it does, it add more eyes to the neighborhood and watching for those things that are in your neighborhood, that vehicles that should not be there. And it brings the neighborhood together. And we had a national night out in October, and that went so well. And I want to encourage all of the neighborhoods, but I'm really targeting in District Two. It's so important for us to have that. We do have some. We have about, I believe, five or six Neighborhood Watch groups. But we would like, my vision is to have every neighborhood in District Two to have Neighborhood Watches. The second thing I want to talk about is Featherline. I want to kind of like talk, because that's in my district. As you know, Featherline divides District Two and District Three. It's, part is in my district and part of it is in Councilwoman Nina Cobb's district. And I am so excited about this, on the progress that we have made with Featherline, and we have made. The first thing, we listened to the residents over in the Featherline area. And by doing that, we had a town hall meeting. That's how we got all of our information from the Featherline citizens over there, over in District Two. And boy, that was a good meeting. And from that, we got the city, along with Mr. Cagle and the staff and Mr. Reynolds, we were able to put a right turning lane. I believe that we had that slide on that right turning lane. It said it, there you go. And we listened to our citizens. And so we put, they wanted a right turning lane, and boy, did that relieve a lot of the traffic. And we got with the, we talked with the county. The county came out with Commissioner Winston and Commissioner Minor. They listened. They had their town hall meetings. Commissioner Minor had a town hall meeting. And the result was a four-way stop sign there at Featherline and Chaparral Road. And so that is tremendous progress in terms of a right turning lane. And not only that, I would like for Mr. Cagle to comment on the CO bond that we have.
Yes, sir.
Please.
The council voted on to have a debt issue, it's called certificate of obligation, in the spring. And we'll be bringing the preliminary items to council in January. There'll be more on there than Featherline Road. But the improvement of Featherline Road from Stagecoach to Chaparral will be on there. And very soon after that, you'll see an award of an engineering contract to begin the design. And so you'll probably see another item on there. It's called an intent to reimburse. So that means we start the engineering work before we issue the debt. We pay ourselves back when we borrow the money. So those are upcoming items that you will see. And Featherline Road will be improved to three lanes. It'll have sidewalks, streetlights, landscaping. It will be done properly. And I know that's a big concern about some of the rezoning that's been proposed in that area, but this road can be finished before anyone would move into any new subdivision out there. Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. And you did say it would be a three lane.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it would be widened into a three lane and a middle lane, turning lane?
Yes, sir.
Great. That's going to relieve. And that's just about all I have. Thank you so much.
And next, our city engineer, Andrew Zagers, will come up and give us a road reconstruction update.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. All right. So we're here to talk a little bit about the major road projects we have. These are majority of the ones that came out in '21 with the Bond Project and started the design back then. So we had a certificate of obligation bond at that point for several roads. They included Watercrest, Willow Springs, Gilmer, and Bunny Trail. And let's see, and then eventually a Stagecoach as well to help reconstruct that as well. And then in addition, we have other projects, which is Ray and Seer and Chaparral. They've been on the books for a while, and we're moving forward with those as well through design. So Gilmer Street, as everyone knows, is still under construction. We started the design in '21, and it's well underway under construction right now. They're working on half the road. We are encountering a lot of water and sewer issues. We found a water line that no one knew about, so our contractor's having to deal with a lot of relocations. But we're out there still moving forward with the line, building a thicker road section, and then also sidewalks on both sides and streetlights. That's well under the way. We're expecting that to actually be complete by July 2025. Watercrest was another one of the projects that started in '21, and it is under construction pretty much starting now. Our contractor's out there. We had the traffic control go up about a week and a half ago. They're starting to clear on the west end. Again, we're working with some redesign and some of the with some redesign and some of the water issues, the water line issues, so as it relates to the stormwater conflicts. But they're moving forward. That eventually will be a three-lane road with sidewalks on both sides. We're putting a signal in and a robinette. And also a couple sidewalk crossings have been added since we went out for bid. So we're working on that. And that'll be done, hopefully, by 2026, about January. Bunny Trail, another project that started in '21. It's also under construction, as everyone knows. That one, we're pretty much just removing and replacing what's out there. Contractor's been well underway, and we're doing some sidewalk work. But that, again, is going back with a lot thicker section that was out there. Should last at least 20 years before we even touch it. It'll be a lot better road than what it was. And again, that'll be done, hopefully, by the end of this summer of next year, August 2025. And then Willow Springs, we started design, but with the construction of all the other projects, with emphasis on getting Stagecoach going, we did put the design on hold on this one until we get a little bit more of Stagecoach done, get the money back into Willow Springs and get that designed. Plus, you know, we have, we're working emphasis on Watercrest before we get this road. This is a little bit more of just rebuilding, confirming some of the sidewalks, and a realignment of the intersection at Watercrest there with the signal. But we will be starting that design back up, hopefully, next year. Randseer, now this is a part of the downtown revitalization as well. This is to improve the whole corridor, redesign it, streetscape it, enhance it, make it that big entrance into the city. We started the design in '22. We were meeting with residents. We did a preliminary kind of design schematic. We just recently approved the, through council, the design to move forward so we can start hitting the main engineering aspects and start dealing with the text dot approvals, the things that take a lot of time. But we're moving forward with this project. We'll continue to meet with the residents, continue to improve the design. But this will be one where we're going to narrow that down to three lanes. We're going to be adding side, and really enhance sidewalks, landscaping. We're going to underground all the utilities, really make it that corridor where people want to go, where it's safe for pedestrians, vehicles, and bikes. And that, we're hopefully going to be designing through '26 when we plan to start construction. The plan is to actually start with the utilities first, put everything underground, and then come back and do all the enhancements. Chaparral's a longer-term project. That's the full length. We're working with the county, with Harker Heights, K-Tempo, Textot. It is a multi-jurisdictional type project. It's going to be, take a long time. We started design in '22. We're at a point now where we're renegotiating with the county to kind of get some, and county and Harker Heights to get the next phase of the design going, getting the funds allocated, so we can continue with that. We're also applying for grants. It's a very expensive project. We've worked with K-Tempo, which is the regional planning area, to adjust the phases of the construction so we can emphasize in that middle section first, where we're looking at the realignment. So from Tremere to East Tremere is going to emphasize to go first. And so that is another one of those projects that's going to be ongoing. Get the design rolling a little bit more fast this year. We're still dealing with Textot and environmental approvals. But that's in one of those long-term. We don't see construction starting till about '28. And then Stagecoach, we've heard a lot from the residents of when this is going to be done. So the plan right now is we're going to go out for bid later this year. So by the end of the year, we're going to have the first phase of Stagecoach out for bidding to get construction. And we're looking at starting at East Tremere, going west, and it looks like we'll be able to get the WS Young with the first phase. So that should be going out for bid, hopefully, within the next month. And then that'll be under construction probably for about a year and a half. As funds come back into our kind of pot of money, we'll continue to work westward to get the whole project and get the whole roadway reconstructed. Reconstructed, excuse me. And with that, I'll turn it over to the fire chief. But one thing I want to add, if you have any questions on any of the projects we're working engineering, if you go to our webpage, we do do a quarterly, kind of a report, a status report on all our projects. So we update that every three months, and it kind of shows where we are on the status of all our projects.
Okay. And before Chief starts, Councilmember Boyd wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Madam Mayor, and great presentation, Mrs. Zagers. I just want to bring some focus to these road reconstruction projects. The council has been very serious in intent on improving the roads around here. Randseer will look completely different once it's completed. We heard the concerns about Stagecoach. That's got a lot more emphasis and prioritization now. As was mentioned, the CO bond is going to reconstruct Featherline. But what I want to bring emphasis to in my district is Mohawk Road. The council recently approved a CO bond for Mohawk Road. Now, why is that important? Down Bunny Trail, we have large subdivisions, one of those being where Alamosito's Creek is at. That subdivision presently has one road in and out with over 400 homes, okay? And they've been dealing with that issue for a long time, traffic backup, et cetera. With Mohawk Road being constructed, they'll not have, they'll not have access to Bunny Trail down from Castle Gap, Guadalupe, and Brushy Creek. We are solving a major issue for a large subdivision of Bunny Trail. And this will be a new construction project. So that's a very big deal for those folks that live on that portion of West Colleen. Councilman Solomon prioritizing, working with Featherline. There's another road I can't think of. But just thinking about these roads, it's pretty exciting to finally get them on the path. And we know it's taking some time, but we're going to get there. And we prioritize these things. They're important to us. You go down Bunny Trail, you go down Watercrest and Gilmer, you see the work being done. So we're doing our part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. And just to add to that, sometimes I know there's a lot of confusion about why some streets are getting major repairs and others aren't. So like, if you look at WS Young or West Cliff, they were a mill and overlay. That's a level of maintenance where you take off a part of asphalt to put new asphalt back. And some people will say, well, why'd you do that? There are roads that are worse. Yes, there are roads that are worse. But a mill and overlay is maintenance, just like you see the cracked ceiling. That's a level of maintenance, one of the first things you do. Some roads are so bad, you can't, if you do a mill and overlay, it's going to come apart anyway because the base is so bad. So some of the projects that you heard about tonight were roads that were so bad, we'd be wasting our money to put another layer of asphalt on it. So they've got to be removed and replaced. That's the most significant form of maintenance that you can do. And it's very difficult. It's much harder to remove and replace a road than go build a new road to a new subdivision or something like that, because there's people living all around it, traffic's already on it, there's utilities under it, over it. It is very difficult to schedule all that. And we have a lot of remove and replace going on right now that takes up a lot of the engineering staff's time. And just to think about it, all the projects that were talked about tonight, probably close to $200 million in road, either new construction or reconstruction. A lot of significant work going on. Chief?
Good evening, and thank you. Tonight, we'll present an update on the Station 4 EOC and Support Facility project and how we're going to staff that new fire station. Just a quick background, and for anybody who's new to the project, the new facility is located at 9200 Tremere Road. It's adjacent to the KASD Transportation Facility, as is highlighted in the blue highlight in the center of the map. That is an area that was identified through a master plan study that was completed by Emergency Services Consulting Incorporated back in 2021 as a service area where we were not meeting our mark of a six-minute response time more than 90% of the time. And that continues to be a pressure point for our response times. Why six minutes, you might ask? That's the amount of time that it takes for brain tissue to start dying and heart muscle to start dying without oxygen. That's why they use that number of six minutes. So we aim to try to get to your house six minutes or less, 90% of the time, which is our goal. Fire doubles in size every minute. So if you think of a garbage can fire doubling in size each minute, if we can get there in six minutes or less, we have a good chance of extinguishing that fire with a minimum amount of damage. Still is damage that can, has to be remediated. But those are our goals and why we use that timeframe. So the new station location includes the construction of a new fire station, an emergency operations center, which the city of Colleen does not have currently, other than one that would take us about three hours to construct to stand up. We have a location that's set up, but it's a multi-use area, and it would take us about three hours. If a disaster hits, if a tornado were to hit, we don't have three hours to stand up any EOC. And then a support services building, which is currently located just down the street here from City Hall on Avenue D, and a fire station that was built in the 1950s. So in fiscal year 2022, we had a CIP plan of 11.9 million of ARPA funding that was approved for the EOC. And then in 2023, CIP plan of 5.7 million for the fire station new build was approved. That funding, though, was requested based on construction prices for similar projects taking place in 2022. If anybody knows anything that happened between then and now, is that construction prices skyrocketed. So we tried to be proactive and get a pre-construction estimate from a consulting firm. And they came back and gave us some ideas that it would be about $22.9 million. And lo and behold, we went out to bid, and the project came back at $23.8 million. So we worked together as a team here, Team Colleen, to secure the funding. Unfortunately, the money that we had allotted as a team here was $22 million, 22 roughly, a little bit more than that. So we had to make some choices. What we needed was a fire training structure as well, the live-fire training building, which we do not have. We had to make a cut. And that's where we made the cut, because having that fire station, the EOC, and being able to store that support services building, work on, maintain our fire apparatus, and store multimillion-dollar vehicles inside, because right now they're stored in the back lot at Central Station out in the elements, that was a higher priority. And we can work on that live-fire training structure somewhere down the road. So to give you a little bit of an idea of what that is for the bids, the base bid is that large building on the bottom right corner of the map. The top left corner is the additional alternate one that was bid. And then additional alternate two was that live-fire training tower that we had to opt out of. But we put all the infrastructure in. So the only thing that's not going to be there is a live-fire training tower. Everything else, the concrete, the electrical work, the drainage, everything else is going to be put in place so that down the road, we are ready to grow into this facility. So this is how it worked out. And what happened is we were able to use some fund balance that was unassigned of $1.9 million, looking at the bottom of this slide, and then some general fund excess fund balance from fiscal year '23 of 4.5 million to get us to the $22.1 million that it's going to take to build the complex without that live-fire training tower. But it's going to make sure that we can respond to those calls in six minutes or less, which is our number one priority. Here's a rendering of what that station is going to look like, along with the support services building behind it, a little bit of an innovative design that I want to give Airport Mike Wilson some credit for. When we went and saw the new hangar that was built, we said, why do we have to have bay doors when we can have a large hangar door and put more vehicles in and not be confined to just one lane in, one lane out to park a fire apparatus inside? So a lot of ideas that, again, came from, like the mayor said earlier, Team Colleen. Here's the side rendering of where the entrance will be for the emergency operations center. And then the second floor is going to be the Training Academy. The unique thing about this structure is that the Training Academy, if we have a disaster that's declared and we have to activate the EOC, the core of the EOC will always remain. But the three Training Academy classrooms will be able to be expanded into to become part of the EOC as breakout rooms, as policy rooms, whatever it might be, that we can be a very large EOC that operates, because they're going to be on the outside perimeter of the core of the EOC. And then our support services building, where we can also expand into a disaster, that can become a logistics section of a large-scale disaster where our logistics section of the EOC would be operating from. And we also have some deep parking to put some apparatus outside, as well as some covered storage that's going to go as well. So where are we at on it? We awarded the bid in February of 2024. That's been completed. We completed our groundbreaking in May of 2024. And our builder, MW Architects, our MW Builders, who is now Saris, is their new name, said, we're going to complete this by July 2025. And I'll be honest, when they told me that, I didn't believe them. And I can tell you, we are on schedule for July 27th of substantial completion. That's going to give us a rough estimate opening for third quarter of 2025, barring any other, any, any major delays. We've had no delays up to this point. We've remained on schedule. And then, of course, just like any new building, we have a one-year warranty period that comes with the building. So what does it look like today? That might not be an exciting picture to you, but it's pretty darn exciting to us. To get from a piece of dirt to steel that's being erected, and tomorrow morning, the last piece of steel on the main building is going to be put in place, that's pretty awesome, to see that and to know that we are on track for having this station open to serve our citizens in less than a year. It's pretty exciting. Here's a view from the back of the building, looking out towards Tremere Road. That concrete structure, the masonry structure you see is the elevator shaft that would be the two-story shaft that you'll utilize for getting up to the second floor EOC or the classrooms for the Fire Academy. And just a different view from the backside. That's more of the fire station side and the pull-through bays for the fire apparatus, where the firefighters are going to be storing their bunker gear, things like that. And a center rear view of the structure, looking towards Tremere Road. Again, not very exciting, but pretty exciting when you've been working on something like this for almost two and a half years, to have steel going up and putting that last piece of steel up as of tomorrow morning. Well, when we build a station, we got to staff it. And that's a big undertaking as well. And the entire team has worked very hard to get that done. A big shout out to Kate McDaniel, our Executive Director of Human Resources, and her team to host 411 total applicants for our entrance exam just this last Sunday. We've changed the way we do things. It used to be a two-day process. And their team took time out of their work week so that they can be here on a Sunday all day long and host 411. Well, we didn't host 411. We had 411 people fill out applications. And the written exam ended up showing up with 256 people. As Kate told me, most likely the largest test that sat in her time here. Definitely the largest in my time here. We've usually had anywhere from 90 to 100 sit for our test. To see 250 people come to sit and take our exam, that is really exciting. Out of the total applications that were submitted prior to the written exam, there were three already certified firefighter paramedics, 15 that were already certified firefighter EMT basics, two that were firefighter only, and 29 that were EMT basic only. Those are people that already have schooling, that we don't have to take six months out to put them through the schooling before they can go on the floor. But our plan was to make sure that we get them hired on in January, just in case we didn't have any of these folks that were certified, so that come July, they are ready to go into operations, have a couple of months of shadowing and working on the fire, fire ground in fire stations, so that when that fire station opens, we are going to fully staff Fire Station 4 upon construction completion. Our written exam and physical agility test took place November 3. And we have a established list that we'll be taking the Civil Service Commission to certify of 100 applicants. We have not had a list of 100 applicants in as long as I've been here and even longer. That tells us that Colleen Fire Department is a place where people want to work, and that's what excites us. So we'll get those people on boarded that are not certified, ready to go by January 5 for our academy. And that academy is going to be taken care of by the Colleen Fire Department Academy staff. And that is our update. I got ahead of myself on that slide. So it's a 12-week Fire Academy. See, I get excited, guys and gals. It is a 12-week Fire Academy with an eight-week EMT Basic Academy. And then we'll put them in July 2025. That's going to give them the one to three months of working time in the Operations Division. I also do want to note that all the new personnel just don't go to Station 4. So if you live in Station 4's area by Tremere Road, it won't be all rookies that are coming to you. We will do a complete redistribution of all staff. That will take us from 239 members to an additional 24. So do that quick math. Kate, help me out. I can't remember. It's after 5. Thank you. 263. Our civil service staff will be 263 members for three shifts, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I apologize, folks. I fell off the wagon there for a second. That's exciting, though, and all those personnel will be distributed. So you have seasoned veteran personnel, along with some of those new personnel, because 24 new members is a large undertaking for a fire department, no matter what size it is. So we are very excited, and it's going to be an exciting year for the Colleen Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Lopez is going to talk to us about the Real-Time Crime Center and our He's going to talk to us about the Real-Time Crime Center and our Axon Project.
Good evening, everybody. Chief, that's great pictures of your facilities, but I still don't see a blue column to show camaraderie and support for the Police Department, but we talk about that later. Right? This afternoon, I'm here, this evening, I'm here to speak to you about two projects that we're very excited about in the city of Colleen and the Police Department, talking about the Real-Time Crime Center update and the Axon Project update. The Real-Time Crime, see, this time last year, that's when I proposed the concept of starting the Real-Time Crime Center. And since November last year, we made a lot of progress. It was approved by City Council on July 16th, and we split the project up in three phases. Phase one was the electrical work, and that project has begun and is about 90% completed. We just have one little construction more to do, and then we'll be finished, will be 100% completed by the start of December. The next phase is the installation of the actual equipment used to operate the Real-Time Crime Center. That includes the furniture and the technology. So that's going to be completed, start in December 2024, and it's going to take approximately three weeks. And then the last phase of the Real-Time Crime Center project is the training on how our personnel will use that software in a responsible manner and to respect the people's privacy. The anticipated completion of the project is going to be February 2025. So in a little over a year, we completed this project. I'm proud of all the hard work Chief Donahue, my Commandant, has done to make sure this project stays on track. The next project we are going to talk about is the Axon Technology Update. And as you recall, that contract was approved on October 1st, and the purchase order was initiated, and we started to receive some of the equipment. But I want to recall all the functional areas of the contract that included the purchase of hardware, warranties, a refresh of all the equipment, and software and training. And so far, we received about 286 body cameras. Start of November 19th, the installation of our new Fleet Three in-car camera systems, the video systems in the police cars is going to start, and that's going to go from November to we anticipate, the vendor said December, but that's 130 cars we're going to do. So to be safe, I think it's going to be done by March. 286 tasers are coming in by the end of January, I mean, December 2025. We have our 11 virtual reality training kits, which help officers deal and train on, you know, deconfliction techniques and how to deal with people with special needs and mental health issues. So those 11 virtual reality training tickets, training kits are here on ground already, and we're going to start training with that in December. We have our three interviews, interview rooms, supposed to be scheduled to be put in around March, April timeframe. We haven't set the date, but that's where we anticipate that to be going on. Our drone, we have purchased drones and drone sensors. As you can recall, the last project we had, the last event we had this past Tuesday, the November 5 Memorial, we use our tethered drone, which is going to start deploying those at all our events downtown, any other place where we think there's an emergency or issue we have to do. Automatic license plate readers is part of that Fleet Three technology. CAD auto tagging, that's something y'all really don't know about, but it helps us tag our videos so we could tell whether it's a felony crime or misdemeanor crime. So that's great. And then the best thing about it is that we have unlimited cloud storage, so we don't have to use servers and pay more maintenance costs for servers. All our videos, all our technologies up in the cloud. So this is the timeline so far. Like I said, we started our Fleet Three deployment, that's the in-car camera systems that started on November 19th, and it says it's supposed to end like January 3rd, but, you know, I don't believe that. I've been around too long, and I've seen these projects, the vendors set up these timelines and they don't hit it because it serves various things. Not that they don't try hard, it just, it takes time to deploy 130 cars. Our virtual reality deployment is done, the body cameras is in progress. We're going to start training on our new body cameras on December 9th, the week of December 9th to December 13th. Our tasers are coming in in 2026, interview rooms, like I said. So we've done a lot of, a lot of progress. So, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chief. And while Tiffany's coming up, I will tell you that I was talking to a group of officers on Monday, and some of them already had the new cameras and the software. And, you know, a lot of times, technologies occur to employees, but they were fired up about the amount of time it was going to save them and how much more efficient they were going to be. So I'm encouraged by the early feedback from the officers. And Tiffany McNair is going to talk to us about a new HUD Section 108 program called the Legacy Challenge.
Legacy Challenge that is linked to the city's block grant entitlement. So as an entitlement community, each year, the city of Colleen is allocated Community Development Block Grant, also just known by the acronym CDBG from HUD, that is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city invests its annual allocation in the following eligible uses for CDBG, that's housing, public facilities and improvements, code enforcement, and other CDBG eligible projects, public services, and CDBG administration. The Section 108 Legacy Challenge is a product of the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program, which allows a CDBG entitlement community to borrow up to five times its CDBG allocation using flexible federally-backed financing. Try saying that three times, "sefta five." Flexible federally-backed financing, there we go. With the CDBG Section 108 Legacy Challenge, HUD is targeting up to $250 million of its loan authority and extending new flexibilities to applicants using Section 108 for housing development and legacy housing projects and other Section 108 eligible activities. This slide shows a list of eligible activities, which include acquisition of real property, economic development projects, and mixed-use or mixed-income development, public facilities and infrastructure improvements, activities in support of new housing construction, and that includes clearance, site improvements and infrastructure, and community-based development organizations are supported for new construction of units. Just a quick note, a community-based development organization is something like your Fort Hood Habitat for Humanity that provides a development of affordable housing over the entire service area, so that would be the entire city of Colleen. The city of Colleen's Section 108 Borrowing Authority is five times its most recent year allocation, multiplied by five. And this year, we have $1.3 million. And so our full borrowing authority is $6,631,145. This information is available online with HUD for every entitlement community across the country. So here's a list of just potential projects for the city of Colleen. Nothing has been committed to, it's just an idea to give us something to start exploring and see, seeing which initiative could gain the most traction and be the most impactful here in the city. So mixed-use development, that is using a structure for commercial/retail space and also for housing. Expansion of the Colleen Reunification Center, that's our homeless shelter that we were here a few weeks ago to get our professional service agreement set in place. That includes housing and supportive services hubs. Investment in the North Colleen Revitalization Area, and for that, we could do affordable housing development and rehabilitation, develop a small business loan fund, do street sidewalk and other site improvements, and eliminate blight and slums for redevelopment. And then finally, an idea that we could explore is the expansion of the Colleen Library Main Branch. So here's some information that's available regarding how the city will be supported by HUD going down this path. HUD has sponsored open office hours. There's an application webinar. HUD has direct technical assistance available to the applicant cities and states, and application drafting and formatting help will be provided. There will be guides to underwriting and finance, and one-on-one help is needed, is available as needed throughout the process. So here's a timeline. I will only highlight the items that are in bold because that's about where we are now. The deadline to submit your letter of interest to HUD was on November 1st. The city of Colleen submitted their letter of interest on October 22nd, 2024. The next date that we are working towards is the deadline to post our proposed application for public comment. I want to just iterate on this point, that this is not anything that the city will do without input from the citizens. And also, it will have to be approved by our governing body before we will submit that. And the deadline to submit the application is on July 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Tiffany. And finally, we'll end up with ways to get involved in the city with Lori Wilson, our Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, you heard a lot about some exciting projects and programs we have in progress and coming down the pipeline in the city of Colleen. But if you're interested in learning more about ongoing opportunities and daily operations for each city department, along with some of the challenges and opportunities ahead, we have a really great mechanism for that, and the application period is currently open. Our Colleen Citizens Academy is an eight-week program that meets once a week on Thursday evenings, beginning January 16th, and runs through March 13th with a formal graduation at the end for you to celebrate your journey and civic engagement. We would love for you to come out and join us for this. We accept about 40 applicants for this program, and it's a great opportunity to meet with staff, ask questions, and learn more about what they do on a daily basis. Additionally, police also has a citizens' police academy. There are two programs offered annually, both in the spring and in the fall. And you'll spend a lot of time learning about each of the divisions in police and even get to spend a day with them at the range. This program enrollment for our next class in the spring of 2025 will begin January 15th and end February 15th. But keep an eye on social media to make sure that you're staying in the loop and are aware of when that program starts, and we'll give you a reminder. Additionally, we are always recruiting for members for our various boards and commissions in the city. On the slide here shows a list of boards or committees with current vacancies, but we accept applications year-round. So if a vacancy occurs on a board that may not currently have a vacancy that's listed here, we'll let you know if there's an opening, and council can consider that appointment when the time comes. You know, we're so grateful to you for spending your time with us this evening, and we hope you got some valuable information. But we want to keep you in the loop. And so there's a lot of ways that you can continue knowing information about the city of Colleen and what's coming down the pipeline. We've got a lot of different social media pages for you to follow, and our communications and marketing team is always putting out content so you can remain informed. We also have an incredible alert system where you can customize the type of information that is texted directly to you. So if you've got a particular priority in mind and you want to know when there's new information or a board meeting, sign up for our alerts, and we'll send you that information as soon as it's available. And always keep an eye on our city website. I think Mr. Zager's mentioned, we've got construction updates that are on there and updated quarterly. We've got good news, Colleen, that's shared on our website as well as our YouTube channel. We want to make sure you're informed, and we spend a lot of time putting information out there so you have what you need. And then we're always available for questions. Council contact information is available on the website as is staff. So if you've got something that you need clarity on, please feel free to reach out. We're here for you.
Thank you, Lori. And now we're to the question-and-answer session, and so members of public may address the council regarding any of the items on the agenda. If you signed up in advance, speak only one time, and you'll be limited to four minutes. And a majority of the council approval is required for any time extensions. And the first person that has signed up is Sean Price.
It is on. Just need to face it towards me a little bit better. Okay, so on the 2040 Plan update, I was just wondering what would their actual, was that the complete story, or did we have any revisions in that plan this year? Because I thought there were two revisions to the 2040 Plan, but I could be mistaken. As well as the, out of the projects that we have, there's 34% that are still due to be completed. Will it all be completed by the end of this year, or are we expected to not, you know, or they carry over until next year?
Oh, they'll, it'll take years. This is a 2040 Plan, so there's no way it could all be done in a couple of years.
Well, it was, the way it was displayed up there was that this was what was to be, to be completed in 2024 because it started in 2023. So that's why I'm a little confused with, you know, that whole idea there where it was, said that that was the estimated completion time. So we're not going to get any of that 34%.
No, no, I didn't say that. I just said the whole plan wouldn't, wouldn't be implemented.
Okay, so it's part of 2040, not just the schedule? Okay, so I'm misunderstanding what, how it was displayed. And I had this one other question. When we're doing the, was it thought about when we did the Ransier Improvement, right? We got a great deal on the price for the 2.5 miles. But it's going to be out of balance, in my opinion, with Veterans Memorial. So is Veterans Memorial part of that plan to revitalize downtown, or is Veterans Memorial outside of downtown? So that was really my, because I'm kind of misunderstanding how it is because.
Sure. Veterans Memorial is a state highway, so it'd be Tech dot that does any work on veterans.
Okay, that explains that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next, Candice Cooper.
Good evening, everybody. Been a minute since I've been in here, so how y'all doing? I am here, obviously, on item 2B in representation for the Downtown Colleen update. Obviously, you guys know I'm a downtown business owner located on Avenue D, but I'm also now the president for the Downtown Merchants Association. And so I just wanted to share with you guys how we feel. We got a couple of the business owners that are also here. Again, the 95 business owners, we want to say thank you guys for committing the time and the intention. We know that in order to develop the downtown area and to build the city, you have to have community engagement. So what we want the community to do is continue to come out and be a part to grow those businesses. We had an amazing first event for Halloween where we were just kind of throwing our hat in the game, figuring out how do we also attract attention and foot traffic in the area without the city's dollars. And so we had our Treats on the Town Halloween event where we saw up to 400-plus attendees from downtown business owners opening up their doors, passing out candy, passing out flyers, business cards. The amazing perspective was that business, that the community got to see the business owners. A lot of the times when they come downtown, they see the food trucks that come down, they see the tents that are there, but this was their opportunity to just see the businesses that are down there. We know there's a lot of naysayers about paying attention to the downtown Colleen, but you want your downtown to be the central culture activity hub. And so every surrounding city that is near us has their events downtown. Also, you want more profit and more revenue from this area so we can continue to grow and add on to projects like the North Colleen Revitalization, like the Ransier Improvement Project, as you continue with the EDC, growing the business park. That comes from the dollars that are generated from the downtown businesses. So we create, we implore the community to continue to come on out there. We have, I'm sure Ms. Kate will be down here, that's, that's our friend, because she really has been a friend to the business owners, growing, making sure that we understand how to really flourish in our area. So she'll be here to, of course, update you guys on the new businesses that we have coming. What we're trying to do with the Merchants Association is partner with the property owners if they need a tenant, if they need help with permits, really connecting them with the resources that are downtown. And then what we're trying to do with the business owners is make sure that they know how to market their business, that they are aware of the exposure opportunities, that we are building an environment in the community. So again, with that Halloween event, people got to come and walk the streets of downtown Colleen with their children. We see constantly, daily, people walking their dogs, riding their bikes. We've got motorized scooters rolling through. We've got the Cruise Control Bike Club that actually comes out with their LED-lit bicycles. And so we really are seeing a change in that. So any, for anyone that is doubting the area and the intention and the focus, I need y'all to come down there. Like they said, there are 89 businesses who are welcoming. Like they said, there are 89 businesses who are welcoming and opening our doors to continue to serve this community. Do you want to continue to grow that small business forefront? The beautiful part about downtown Colleen is most of us are, we own the properties that we're in and we are committed to growing our community. And so I thank you guys for the attention that you have paid. It does generate more revenue for the city as a whole and so continue to come out and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is it Aisha Shields? Aisha, thank you.
So I'm Aisha Shields. I am one of the new 62 businesses that have come to downtown Colleen. We are the Wicked Apple and we offer gourmet-flavored caramel apples. We just had our grand opening October 5th. And when I say the city has come out, they have showed us so much love. We started out doing just the farmers markets here. We would do Harker Heights, we would do the City of Colleen Night Market. We literally started from the bottom, now we're here. But we have our small business, we're at 320 East Avenue D. And the community showed us that they wanted us here, right? And we were able to open up our business. Our first month, we closed out with $15,000 in sales. We're talking apples, guys. Apples. So yes, the city will get our taxes. So we are able to contribute to that as well. But we also are in the community, but we are also in the community. So we partner with Central County Services and with KISD 18+. So we actually have individuals with developmental disabilities come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays and they help us prep. We are working on getting someone in on Thursday when we're open to be a greeter for the public. So we are working with the community. We want to be here. The community has showed us that they want us here. We even have an unhoused individual that comes in on Sundays and cleans our floors and our bathrooms and stuff like that. So we're here for the community. The community has been here for us. We're really excited about what's going on in downtown Colleen. As Candice mentioned, our night on the town was fantastic. People love to come and see the businesses for what they are. So it was nice for them to be able to come out and see us and for us to be able to interact with them. So we are here, we want to be here, we plan to stay here for a while. The city has let us know that they want us here. So we are definitely all in for everything that's going on for downtown Colleen.
Thank you. Next is William Davis Jr.
Mayor Nash King and council members. I'm William Davis. I live in Regency Place, which is a place that is not on the city maintenance map. Just want to bring that to the attention. Our street has not been repaired since it's been laid or since it was laid and we're part of the feeder, one of the feeder lines that's off of Watercrest. So my question, or as my, I guess my statement would be, when will waterfall possibly be repaired? There's about 400 meters of the street that gets repaired about every two years. They put down a tarmac on the cracks. But after that, starting at my address and the Regency Place, which is the smallest subdivision in Colleen, there have been no repairs since it's been there. And my concern is every year since the winter, we had the freeze, the substrate for the street has been deteriorating and the surface has evolved and dropped about four inches. So normally, when you go around a curve, and our street is curved, it's an S curve. So you go around a curve, normally the streets are graded to where there's a slight incline to keep everything in motion. But what you have is a large degree of water erosion and a degree or degradation of the city substrate or the street substrate. So now we've got a compromise of an irrepaired street and high speed. So it's been tearing the road up. It's just a, it's not a complaint, but it's more or less like just to identify that this needs to be entertained. And I guess I'll entertain the city manager, city engineer, and the city plans department directly to give them a little bit more specifics about it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'd appreciate that. And just to let you know, coming up, Mr. Zager's can probably tell me when it is on a future council item. We've done a comprehensive survey of every street in town and they'll all have street ratings. But one thing, while we focused on the major streets, we know there's a huge backlog of work on residential streets and we're going to be presenting that information to the council. I don't know exactly when, but fairly soon, the work's been done. So we know we have a lot of residential streets that need work as well. But we'll be happy to, be happy to talk to you about your specific individual street.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is James Seals.
So first and foremost, I just want to say for all the veterans that are on the staff in the city, we appreciate your service. And second, it was good really hearing about the downtown revitalization. Mayor, your passion comes through the business owners. It's really a great story of how this is progressing. So it's just really good to see and hear that. You know, as far as Fetterline, what's happened so far is a good thing. And you know, and no one's going to take that away, the right turn lane, the stop signs. But you know, those are, you know, things, terms like temporary and interim, they're not solutions, they're not fixes. You know, for background, again, Fetterline was supposed to be re-engineered, reconstructed within, from 2014, within five years. That memorandum of resolution is still sitting in the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan posted on the city's website. So we've been waiting a very long time. And you know, the statement that the road will be fixed before the houses are built, it's just really hard to understand that when all the projects that were just discussed have been in the works for three to four years. And you see things like Victory Ranch with their Phase 1 plat was approved in March and they're already building houses. So you know, I don't think the timelines are going to synchronize and that's the issues that the community is trying to bring forth. Fetterline is more than an intersection. Okay? Fetterline is 1.3 mile road, 1.3 mile road. It had 32 accidents on it, only eight are attributed to that intersection. And so waiting three to four years, right now in your capital improvement plan, the 25 to 29, Tremere Road widening, that construction wouldn't even start until 2030. So if you're replacing Tremere Road with Fetterline, you know, you're five years out. And so that, those are the issues that the community sees. We've seen this promise before. Turnbow Ranch was never supposed to have a house built on it until Chapparal was reconstructed. And the houses are there and it's still a two-lane county road. So you have to understand where we're coming from. There's been four accidents on Cricklewood in the past three weeks alone. Like I'm not even counting everything else. So it's very important to us as to why we're pushing as hard as we are to not have the zoning redone until the road is fixed. And I think it's important for this staff to understand and this council to understand that. The community is trying to tell you, it's not safe. It's not safe for motorists, it's not safe for pedestrians, it's not safe for students, it's not safe for anyone on a bicycle. And those things won't be addressed by adding more homes. There will be 4,000 homes between Turnbow Ranch and Thousand Oaks, 4,000 homes. That's within one block of Fetterline, each way. So just to understand, you know, that's where we're coming from. And I'll have a lot more information when this does come up, but you know, I'm trying to let you know now, this is why we're pushing back the way we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker. And Mr. Counsel, do you have any other closing comments?
I just want to address, in 2014, I know most of the council was not even in place and each council had their own priorities. One thing about this council, we are focused on infrastructure. So if there was some kind of memorandum of agreement, well, we weren't even here. So whatever reason that particular council decide to not move forward with that, I don't know. However, every roadway, every street in the city of Colleen is important. Just listening to the gentleman in the back with the street being wobbsided is dangerous. There are a lot of dangerous streets within our city. I mean, most residents, you don't hear from them because they're not involved with our council meetings. So I do hear what our residents is saying and I hate that that agreement didn't go forth. And the council have made decisions on our infrastructure with the funding that we do have. And I'm just grateful that you come to speak, Mr. Seale. You're very involved with our community and engagement and my heart goes out to you because you do get involved. But we hear from a lot of residents and I wish that we had enough funding to go back, especially with Rand Seer. I don't know, that's before 2014. There are some, I agree with you, but there was a reason behind making that decision and I just wish we had more funding. And we can get more funding to really take care of a lot of roadway and streets, but that will cause street maintenance fee to go up. And I would pay it too. It will have to be a fee if we really want to bring more revenue into our city to just really focus our attention on our infrastructure. So thank you for speaking for the residents in your area, but we do hear you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we move into a new congressional year and State Assembly gets together in January again, we are going to need your help. As we advocate for direct funding to our, through our NPOs in our cities, it's seven of, eight of us reaching out, but when each of the constituents can reach out to your elected congressman and tell him, hey, we need that money straight to us. Because of the money that, some of the money we're getting to pay for Chapparal and some of the other roads, we're competing with other regions across the state. And then within the region, we're competing with other cities. So as we, as I would ask and beg, and I'm thankful for everyone being here, that reach out, reach out to your elected officials at the state and national level and tell them, hey, our region needs that money directly and we need it a little sooner. So when the projected infrastructure bill that may come up after January, please pay attention and write Congressman Fluger and Congressman Carter and Senator Cruz and Senator Coroner. That's all I, thanks.
Councilmember Boyd.
My closing statement would just be that continuing to advocate for what the citizens need and want for the city of Colleen. And being a district representative, I'll speak quickly about West Colleen. As you know, there's a lot of road projects that are going on. You should know as well, there are park projects that are on the conveyor belt that will eventually be discussed to solve that issue. As we all know, there's a major lack of park space in West Colleen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Segaro.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everybody, for being out here. We appreciate you coming out. We always like to hear from different voices and so those who you got. Is there anybody here that's this first time? Oh, well, thank you. We'd like to see more people like that, that is the first time. And come on out because you guys make great comments and the council's always here to try to do the right thing. And one of the biggest challenges that we have as council, and I always say this, is growth. Growth is a big challenge. A lot of times, when you come up here and somebody speak, they're speaking for what they believe is right and their belief is that they're representing the citizens, which they are. But as council members, we try to hear everybody. So a lot of times, you know, when somebody speaks, they're only hearing half of the story, then we got to get the other half. And housing is a, is a good example. Has anybody's tax increased this year? You're the only one, everybody else is good. And the council's tax rate has gone down. We haven't increased tax rates and why does the tax keep going up? And it has nothing to do with what we do, it's just the market, the demand, supply and demand. And so when somebody says, we don't, because I hear this all the time and people say, you know, council is building too many houses. Well, we don't build houses. That's the first thing. But then, when they say we're building too many houses, the second thing is, why don't we have more entertainment or groceries? And as business owners, what is the number one thing that you guys need? And I always said that, it's foot traffic. You guys need people coming into your business and that's the only way you're going to sustain yourself because you guys are not a charity. And we don't want our downtown to turn into a charity. And a lot of times, that's what happens is people want to put homeless centers and things that don't make money and you guys are taking a risk. You guys are investing in our downtown, but ultimately, you need that foot traffic. You want people to go down and occupy. And that place has been landlocked for a long time, so what we need to try to do is bring people down there so they can occupy. And so when people say, you know, we're building too much, and then they say, I want more entertainment, I want more music, I want things like that, well, somebody has to go because only a certain percentage, if you understand business, a certain percentage, you know, I cannot eat apples every day. That sounded real good, but if I go down there every day to try to, I can't. So only a certain percentage of people are going to go down there every day and it has to be somebody different. It can't be the same people. That's a bad diet, no matter how good it is. And so that's the thing that people got to understand, it's supply and demand. We don't control the market, the consumer does. And so when people say, you know, we're doing this or we're doing that, we're not doing it, we're just trying to control that. And so it's, it's one of the biggest challenges we have because we're always trying to make sure that we do the right thing for all of our citizens, not just one. And so when, I always kind of tell myself, you know, because people don't want anything being built in their backyard, but I said this before, well, before you moved in, there was people that didn't want you there either. And so, and you're there. And so that is the big challenge, is just trying to make sure that everybody has a good quality of life. And that's one of the big drivers of our city, is our quality of life. We have some great housing, affordable housing, a lot of great things to do here in our city. We also heard a lot of great things today. This city is just astronomical and I visit a lot of cities and, you know, the leadership here. And one of the reasons why we see a lot of great things is because we have a lot of great staff, you know? The city manager has done a great job. The people that he hires do a great job, you know, you heard about them. And we're so proud of them, we're proud of our staff. We just got to make sure that we allow them to do what they know how to do best and that's it. I'm not a city manager, I didn't come here, I'm a business person. I've been doing business for 30 years. I don't go out and develop houses, even though I'm accused of it, I'm a bad guy because I'm in real estate, but I don't build houses. I don't even sell brand-new houses. You know, my job is to the consumer and so, but that's okay, you know, I can take it. And so, but we love it and our goal ultimately, the last thing is just, we're here just to take care of you, our citizens. That's it. And so I appreciate you, I appreciate all the feedback. I'm always available, everybody knows. My private number is my city number, so anybody can call me. I don't have a city phone, I don't have, so anybody can call me, my office is right there for you. People come there all the time, somebody just came by today. So some of you guys do that, take advantage of it, come by right in front of Hobby Lobby. You leave my office, you can go to Hobby Lobby and shop. Or behind me, it's In-N-Out Burger. Or, so I'll find a way to entertain you if you come visit me. So with that, thank you and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon.
Well, I just want to say, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say, you know, we, I want to echo that we listen. I want to say, you know, we, we, I want to echo that we listen, and our job is to listen and to be concerned about what you are concerned about. And I want to say, not only council listen, but the, the staff, I mean, they work for you, they work to make this city a better place to live in, and they do a great, great job at it. They will go, they will leap, they will go farther to, to make you satisfied. While we can't do everything, we can't solve every problem right away, but believe me, that the staff here, the entire staff of the city, they work hard trying to, to please and to make this city, again, a great city and to, to address your concerns, and, and that's what we're all about. And so I want to say thank you for coming out, thank you for giving us the opportunity to hear you, and thank you for listening to us and, and knowing that we are for you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Before we close, I just want to remind everyone, please, if it was a question that was not on the agenda, please utilize the cards that's on this table and write your question down, the staff or council will get back with you with, with an answer. And Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Gonzalez, due to medical reasons, and she did give me permission to say this, that she is not here tonight. And my closing remarks is, I'm truly honored to serve with this council, I'm truly honored to work with the staff, Mr. Cagle, Mrs. Wilson, and our city attorney, Mrs. Clement. Those three individuals I just called out, they really play a vital part in, with guidance and, and direction, not only with the council, also with the executive directors who do such a tremendous job. I mean, I can, we can't ask for better leaders within our community, especially our executive directors and our employees, they're the face of the city. So if you see our employees anywhere, City of Colleen truck, City of Colleen shirt, say thank you. They're the reason your quality of life is getting better every day. From the time I came on this council, I got in Colleen around 1995, just here to visit, but went out and came back in and out. And when I started serving on the council in 2017, up to this day, our city have come a long way. And it's not because I just got on the council, it's for the individuals, our employees and executive directors, that have been here long before anyone at this table decide to run for a position. They carried this city, we just came along to assist, and our fire department and our police department, our first responders, when you see them, be grateful, they work around the clock. Not only the city of Colleen, we have fire department firefighters leaving our state to go in another state like Florida and help the survivors in a hurricane. We have our police officers twenty-four-seven, if you need them, going different places within Texas, they're there to help you. So we got the top of the line when it comes to employees. Is any system perfect? No. Is any council member or the decisions we make every time, is it perfect to some people? No. But we do our best to ensure that we utilize your revenues that the budget has, to ensure that every, each and individual person that lives in the city of Colleen, we do not waste the money. We do the best to take our city to the next level. And Mr. Cagle, I'm truly honored that you are the moderator for tonight's special workshop. And once again, thank you all for taking your time to come out and be safe while going home. Mr. Cagle, do you have any closing remarks before I? All right, council, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Beating adjourn. All in favor of adjourn? Yeah, yeah, yeah.